This is the East Roray Union Board of Education for education week through Wednesday, September fourteenth.
I thought we'd just buy the United States of America. These are my, of course, my nation, our God. They're so, but she's just.
Right into item two. Let me back there, let me agenda.
Yep, two, one, I need to do a team of people for each school, different work, these were our time. School who serves on services under number one. Item C, under one, I'm requiring board action. If you're twenty, one point O, actually position the tenure area showing the conditions for special education to.
We got item four, or four, now that.
Yeah, definitely. So I'll start off with first just like to recognize when we see that a claimation, actually what we see by these were educational foundation from the class nine three seven two and the amount of twelve hundred letters. To be designated as if possible to the middle school library restoration project they came by for the union and the tour of both schools and. The ceiling was open so that they could see what the rest of it should may look like and they were so interested and impressed that they decided to make a donation to. For that, for that purpose, so they they'll be going ahead for the foundation and so. Already made this right, but we're really grateful, thankful for this last week because I mean. Very generous. And then, so why don't we go on to. Item C.
Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Erin Willer to a one point O FTE position in the tenure area of education with children with handicapping condition. Nice details in your agenda. I have no change, so, run this still weather. Like my Mrs. Daniel, question. All over the paper.
Aye.
Close, extension, carry six zero. Would you like to welcome?
And we had a few of the teachers approved earlier during the summer, but we're unable to attend the meeting at that time. So I'm just gonna go through the list and if you could all just stand up, it would be a little pause at the end, we're grateful to have you with us. Kim Brock, who is teaching special edit, Parkdale. Jenny, who is teaching business at the high school. Patrick Swan, who is the building staff at the high school. Kathy Webster, who is teaching special education at Parkdale. Sam Alon, who is teaching social studies at the high school. And Samantha Miller, who is teaching grade, first grade at Parkdale. And Katie McGarrett, I don't think she's here yet. Katie McGarrett is with us, but she is actually at open house because she's teaching, she's a long term sub and different, so congratulations, all of you, thank. Yeah, I'd just like to say that the school just took off to a really great start, that's a very. No, I guess it's just a very positive. Feeling, we gotta be grateful we have, and it's just kind of a typical setting. Day one started off, and the kids are excited, and teaching, well, it's definitely excited, so. Yeah, I'll leave it to the administrators, I'm sure they'll have comments about what's going on, that thing is a busy day, it's been a busy, been a busy couple of weeks, I got help, so. So, you know, I'll leave that one as a negative. Of course.
Thank you. Um, moving on to board member comments, I have the opportunity to attend the staff opening day, I know there were many days of getting started this year, I know several board members attended different things. But I'm very fortunate that two board members were in that morning, and I agree, the atmosphere is so positive this year, besides that, to the things that thank you, the products and administrators and all the teachers and staff for getting us ready for a great start for the year, with the maiden. Incredible to see all the teachers honored for their longevity, to see so many new faces in front of the auditorium, I think we were working on the wraparound program there, there were so many, so great, welcome to everyone, some of you, have a great year.
Um, I attended the opening day for Parkdale, which is on the, on campus basis, and it was also really nice to see how supportive and kind our faculty and staff were to these students who did come and go. Here to do that, some of the pre-k students were not as taught as in school. This was tough, tigers. Um, I also attended the clerical strong parents night, it's given by Mrs. Lyons, presentation explained the program exactly. It's a program that I'm really sorry that my kids are not going to be able to get part of, and it's something that I think that's just a form of attitude from, and it's really beneficial to all of our students. I also attended both team day and the teacher day for the new staff. There were so many, as Mrs. Anderson said, so many new faculty, so many faces, it's great to see them all, the icebreakers on both days, perhaps really wonderful, it's great, great, all of them. Last Thursday was a delicate assembly meeting, I'm sure you've all got already, you can email explaining exactly what took place, but one thing I do want to say, well, they're trying to do different programs this year. And one of them is going to be called the road rally, you know, they're gonna try to have members of the organization building different schools within our home. To try to see where they're located, but currently the scavenger hunt program. We always have the legislative breakfast, this year they're gonna do one where it'll rattle dinner at the end of shoes, so those are the two new ones that we're gonna share. Um, the last thing is I wanted to say, I was, I was very disappointed with the article that was in a recent, a recent paper, I thought it's very misleading with inaccuracies around those. As I've said numerously, all six of you, um, maybe you guys, I'm unable to be here to, I would not allow my child in this school if I did not. And our safety plans, everything that state requires, OSIS has looked at it, state has looked at it, and it really. It really disappoints me to think that parents in this community might have any, any thought that their kids are not safe, because I think that's a huge disservice to them. Because our people are safe and our plan is as it should be for the people that are in charge and say, they need us to.
Thank you. So I got to go to the, the new team member day and welcoming all the new team members that have been. Gone over the last year or so, and I have to say that it was great meeting all the new team members, I had a really good time doing that. Mr. Manbraddy is a powerful public speaker, who by the end had some, some people in tears, and I would say I was one of them, but in a good way, in a sense that it was, it was, that was a great start to the week and then to end that. That kind of kind span, to go to the welcome back for the teachers and staff day, that was just inspiring and. I have been committed to the district for many years now. In different roles, whether it's, in, in different roles, as a parent, as PTO member, as, as just person in the community, in athletics and in different ways. But that opening day for the teachers and staff, especially in the evening. Gave me a different awareness of the amount of enthusiasm, the amount of support, the amount of. Thought that is put into our, into the school year and into the, the teachers and it was inspired, there was a guest speaker that taught about teach like a pirate and it was basically like. Connect with the students and do what you kind of connect with the students and, and that's a built important and it's, and it was just, it was inspiring and by the end of that. Speaker, to see people just nodding, yeah, yeah, I can do this, I got this, I got this year and it's been difficult for a lot of teachers and for a lot of parents and a lot of students. And it's been a difficult few years, but to have that amount of support behind them and behind me as a new team member doing this, which is not necessarily. Um, it was, it was really inspiring and so it was a great way to start the year and I just, I had fun and I'm super positive and I love meeting everybody in, in different, that's right, so I'd like to do that. Thank you. Others?
I wasn't here to overthink that stuff, because the school board president sent me Pittsburgh to listen, bless the parish. Other than that, I certainly would beg. I got scouting reports for it. Uh, business related, the internal auditor recently completed the risk assessment report, the fiscal year and the support. For some, some of the areas, remember the audit committee having reported well, believes it's still a part. Maybe we'll review the report and ask questions. Maybe that's changed, but that. We have to prove that as you want, part of the work.
Well, I think they, you're required to have a corrective action plan if there is need for correct action, I mean, we're at the report, I don't think there is, I think it's very positive, it's important, so. Uh, I think it just needs to be presented to the board, I, I love.
Okay, well, we set up our next audit committee, maybe we go, here the people that go report, but we're presenting to the audit committee, we definitely share. He was all thought of.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a, so I also went to the, the middle, it's like into middle school on the third grade school and was like, for that one, park down, so that was the stuff. But it was really fun to see the representation of the principals and the teachers, everyone up there, reading the students that they came in. And what struck me the most is the number and kind of students that are called by name, and I knew quite a few of students, but I definitely didn't know as many as the teachers and. This ratio that we're talking about, so it, it was great to see their welcome and to see their excitement and see their new shoes and their backpacks. And it was, it was just fun, I could see some of the fifth graders and I think I only saw one fifth grader with teary eyes and that was, that was rough, but then I saw, you know, teacher.
Teacher.
It was a student, but then I saw, you know, someone take that through the side, let me help you, this is gonna be fine, and that was also a, that was a positive. Especially having a fifth grader coming to, to, and see what, what's happening. Can you? Do you mind?
Um, I also miss the company that is going to be a state principal for this. I'm all about. But it's wonderful, I'm so excited to hear all about what happened and I just, you know, wish everyone follows, because. Um, and I'm sure Dan's gonna talk about this, Simon's still a center, but coming into the educational foundation on Friday, the third, I think it's the tenth year of the celebration, it's gonna be at the brink. And it's, if you have, if you haven't been to it, try and put it on your calendar and make it, it's a wonderful, wonderful event, very fun, as you know, Mr. Stewart keeps saying. Um, that is one thing, and then I just had a follow up about the legislative practice, they want to, are they going to have the legislators that come at the end of the year or is it just getting rid of the whole, so they're not doing it, they're gonna do.
In terms of.
Alright, yeah, that's right. That's it.
Thank you, a couple things, first of all, it's a privilege working with Mark and Manbraddy as a tag team to greet the new teachers and, and give them a tour of the community and talking about. The horror, we did it virtually again this year, and frankly, I think there's a lot of advantage associated with, with the, the doing it on the screen and, and having Mark and I go back and forth between each other, so I have the pleasure of working with. And to have this delightful meeting, all of you folks and your colleagues, the room is full, there were seventy people, it was, it was a real standing room overload, you know. There you go.
We're still expecting.
Yeah, five things.
Five things, right, I'm ready.
Uh, the other thing I want to talk about is the foundation a little bit, as most of you know, the, the foundation's been giving grants for many years now, totaling approximately a million dollars. Uh, and most of those were grants of several thousand dollars, individual teachers for creative, innovative things that they could do in their classroom that would not otherwise be available through the district budget. Uh, or that would require waiting for a year to get the budget approved and so it, so there, there are terrific opportunities for new teachers in particular to, to. Get a little bit of financial support for some great idea, which the principal would love to help you do, but we might not be, she might not be. So, so at any rate, I put in a plug for that and, and along those lines, we just granted two new grants this past week, just. Uh, and, well, it was yesterday. Uh, the, the first one to, to Jeff Shelley and Larry Prustine, it's one thing called, I have to read this, so I don't mess it up. Dear exclusion zones and the power of keystone species. Now, it's, we get the high school and I'm not, I'm just, I'm not. You can, you can dream up in your own mind what it might be, that's only subject for elaborately, and to tell you about dear exclusion zones, you know, keystone species. And it's, the, the here, several people were hoping that they could build a here, found their houses in the village, but apparently they're gonna be at the highest. Uh, the, the second, that was, that was for three thousand and fifty two dollars, and the second grant that was approved yesterday was for digital pianos for the twenty first century Paul Blackwell. Paul is an amazing music teacher, teaches general music and vocal music and has, you see him at a lot of foundation events, like now singing and he's, he's just a teacher who, who has brought. Learning playing piano to general music lessons, this is unheard of, you know, so we, so he has had for, for the past fifteen years or more, a. A classroom set of digital pianos that he uses for his general music class, well, they become obsolete and, and some of them don't work and it's just not, it's just not what you want. So he proposed thirty new digital pianos and what's great about them is now they're interactive, so, so students can share what their, their composition with another student, they can work together in groups. They can store what they do on their laptop, there's just a whole lot of, of major improvements to the teaching of piano for, for middle school students who, who would never had that opportunity. Maybe it'll be a, an impetus for them to see you on the best, so we're delighted to provide that. Uh, the, the other thing I want to bring you up to date on is the recognition project, if you recall, several months ago, we, we gave you a little crease in page about the foundations plan. Recognize the whole community for all of the effort and, and trials and tribulations associated with the last few years and that. And, and the recognition is supposed to be the construction of a, the, an outdoor classroom in the front of this building. Which can be used as a classroom during school hours, but which will be available to the community for, for gatherings when school is not in session. Uh, and it, it will be a little plaza by the flagpole, which will have benches and a big round table and will be a lovely, a lovely gathering place for students, for class, or for community members, for whatever reason they might want. So that is coming to pass, we, we have a contractor now who is prepared to do the work in October, so he, he's below quote, within the budget. Uh, the orange beach students are busy constructing the big round table and the benches for it, the box lawn furniture people have built some of the other benches for it and. Uh, and we hope to have this thing dedicated sometime in November, so we, we, it's a little behind schedule, we're hoping to do it, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna happen, instruction work tends to be behind schedule and. So we're delighted to bring you up to date on that project as well, and thank you, Kim, for talking about the celebration. Uh, we look forward to seeing, to both getting that made in the next round.
I thank you for the foundation, we were there, considering, considering you've generated the. Um, then moving on to item six, administrator comments. Who would love to?
I think I can start, I'd be more than ready, or you want to clear up that? Free for all, go ahead, okay. Um, I'd just like to welcome, to say that we welcome twenty one new students to our community, we had fifty four new pre-k students and we added an eight one one and I. At tribute our wonderful success in our opening to the work, the hard work of our custodial staff, our clerical staff, our teachers, everyone, from getting the little ones off the bus to their classes. Um, and up those stairs, it's amazing what pre-k students can do and we were stunned by there going to be a depth. And while there were some tears, there were, there were lots of, I love schools at the end of the day, so we had an, an amazing opening. Our open house is tomorrow at for grades one through four, we've already had our pre-k open house and our meet and greet. Um, and we also have a, like to invite all the board members to our bike to school event, um, our PTO is sponsoring, that's on October sixth. And our fall festival, which is on that same evening, a wonderful event for everyone to come out and enjoy the community and we're looking forward to seeing all our families. It's been great having everyone back.
Brown?
I'll stand up, just because I got demoted to the back row here. Um, I just wanted to, very similar, we had, in all honesty, it's been as smooth and great of a start to the school year that I can, I've ever been a part of. Um, it's been just phenomenal, um, the energy of the teachers, the positive vibes that are going on with some of the professional development that they've been through, just, there's like this, there's this excitement and rejuvenation in everyone's blood, it's just, it's contagious and it's incredible. I'm loving every second of it, so thank you to all the teachers, um, you know, and the parents, obviously, who are supporting us, and really just the students that have been working hard. Tonight, as you probably saw, we had a fifth grade open house, I'm not sure of the exact percentage, but I would say we had well over eighty five to ninety percent of the parents in attendance. And that just goes to show this incredible community that we all serve and work in, and it was just great, Mr. Live Rock and I have been doing class meetings where we've met with all of the students at a grade level at the time and. And we really don't focus so much on the specific rules of the school, and we talk more about having pride in your school, having gratitude for, you know, being in such a wonderful, supportive place. And I can just tell you, our students see it, we've, I've seen more thank yous from students to teachers and from students to us, we've shared more laughs already this year than typically we would halfway through the year. It just has an incredible feel, so I just want to thank everyone involved in all the hard, hard work and I know that Mr. Live Rock is going to give a little update on our morning today, which was very exciting.
It was, if you're anywhere in the building, you've probably heard what was going on in the gym today, so we always start out the year with an opening assembly and we'll have speakers and presenters come in. So today, we went off beat a little bit and we had a gentleman named Austin Lanier come in and Austin is a, he's a motivational speaker, he shares a very powerful story that connects with middle schoolers. He talks about his story going through middle school and high school, and you could tell the kids were just, just locked in the entire time of his story and, and a lot of, a lot of positive vibes that, that came out of this story. But at the end of it, so he's, he's not just a speaker, but he's also a professional musician, he's a rapper, so he actually has an album, he's opened up for some, some big acts before, so at the end, he put on about a fifteen minute concert. Uh, so we were able to get a bunch of photos and videos and put on our social media accounts on our, our Facebook page and also on our Instagram, so. Um, and unbeknownst to us, he asked Mr. Brown and I to come up onto the stage with him and then he gave us lines to, to attempt to rap to. In, in the show today, so kids had a blast, it was a whole lot of fun, so we should know that you're in time.
Anybody get a video of that?
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yes, they did, and we already posted.
Uh, throwing the students, Mr. Brown, Stan, Steven.
I'm, I'm gonna say we were the master of the work. Round stage, so, so it was a lot of fun, so check out social media, you can see a lot of the videos from that and see what Austin's all about and, and certainly if you know any other school kids talk about and, and see what they thought about this one. You have something? Just me? Okay. Um. Thanks for joining me in the back, Brown, I appreciate it. So just quickly reiterate that, that the thank you to everyone contributed to the start of the school year, enjoyed having the, the three days with the Board of Education members, the faculty and staff members and thanks to. Our technology department and Jess and, and Mark for coordinating those days, it was as smooth a start as, as I can ever remember as well and, and it's a team effort and I appreciate the team that, that we have here. Uh, and, and Mr. Brown was talking about sort of that, that normal return to school this year and I, I see a number of, of board members who have students that are children at the high school, so. That was normal today when I sent out the letter talking about open house and parent teacher conferences and homecoming, that's just around the corner, but I did want to bring one thing to the attention of the board. Uh, and I think we've mentioned this before, where the, the pandemic forced us to reevaluate and adjust and take a different approach or a new approach to some common themes of the past. And community service was one of those things, the pandemic shifted our focus to, to coordinating community service days for our students. At the same time, the state has an initiative and, and, and the most recent one is a seal of civic readiness. And ironically, our work of creating service learning days for our students falls right in line with what the state was also coordinating, so I'm just gonna read a brief statement that I provided our parents today. And our students are gonna hear about this tomorrow and Friday during our class meetings, so. Today I announced to our, our parents that we're starting this year in response to New York State Education Department's introduction of a seal of civic readiness. Our community service requirements and the update to our community service requirements. Our entire student body, grades nine through twelve, will be participating in two full days of service learning. One day in the fall, which is going to be during homecoming week, and one day in the spring, which will be during our prom week. By the time our current ninth graders graduate, they will have been able to earn fifty hours of community service. The seal of civic readiness distinction will be on their transcript and their diplomas. And it'll be a great opportunity, as we've seen during the last two years, for our students to serve their community during their time at East Roray High School. So I just want to bring to your attention the significance and the change of community service to service learning, while they sound the same, there's an important distinction. While the former involves volunteering to help people in a particular area, the latter reflects an educational approach to which students learn theories in the classroom. While at the same time volunteering with outside agencies, the experience is designed to deepen an understanding of what is being taught. And it is a prime, is the primary reason we are excited about implementing this revised graduation requirement. There are a lot of details to the seal of civic readiness, but one of the major shifts that you'll see on the outside is now a, a day of service learning in the fall and a day in the spring. So we'll do one day during homecoming week where the ninth and tenth graders will go out and provide, will provide them service learning opportunities in East Roray and throughout the Western New York community. And then another day that our juniors and seniors will go out and we'll flip it again and do that in the springtime as well, so we're excited about this change and, and thrilled that it goes right along with what the state. Um, is recognizing as a seal of civic readiness.
Right.
Yes.
So what about, so students that are already doing community service or have ideas of community service, will those count as well or, or are you, will it focus more on this civic?
So to, to make that distinction of the seal civic readiness, there'll be a few students who will achieve that and there's a lot of details that I'll be sharing with parents and, and with students. Um, but we're looking at this of, of almost all of our students in the freshman class and most of our students in the sophomore class will be able to. and most of our students in the sophomore class will be able to achieve this by the time they graduate because there are academic requirements as well.
If you announce that for education, that they no longer going to be required to do X number of hours for their time.
Right.
This is going to take, we take place.
We'll still have the meeting requirement, but this will replace what traditionally was asking them to do 30 hours on their own.
And if they do those, they do those, they, wow.
Yes.
And the juniors and seniors though, they will not get this?
Correct, there's a few that might. There are a few that might because of the community service that they've done on their own, plus the academic progress that they've made. But again, we're looking at this of being, almost all of our freshmen will achieve this by the time they graduate.
Yes, it's really great. The response to community service because we, in the last, it's, I gave it my own way because of so many restrictions putting it together. I received numerous compliments from the community, from NOTS, other organizations that we went to. They sent groups of kids and they had a specific five performance training at NOTS. They were preparing for the opening wedding season. And so they left it to a week before the first wedding. And our kids came in to do the quick rounds in the gardens and I thought, well, you kind of rushed. Our kids did a very great job and they were thrilled. I would say for so long. Like one of the positive things that have come out of the pandemic, we have made some adjustments and shifts that were going to keep.
I think it's a wonderful sneaky way to get our kids engaged in something they might not otherwise be engaged in. Show them, especially as they move up a cycle and their eyes are starting to look outside the community. It might still have one more passive thing on the books on something.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other administrators who have anything to say?
I probably should have went first if I can look backstage and all the magic happens onstage in school. So more just a couple of business points of order. The grid that I normally present to the board each month, that will resume in October. We're just going to get Europe running. Once the audit is complete, then you'll get the wrap up of last year's grid and that all. So, but we do have a number of hires tonight, so we're anticipating. I think the person on the bus shows question, everything in between budget and within plan. We just have to figure out, especially with financial funding to rest. So we don't anticipate any surprises in October, but you won't see that till October. And then once the audit's done, we'll see last year's as well. Policy committee, you'll notice the first time in many, many, many months, we don't have any new policies. We did have a plan to have new ones ready for the number 28 meeting, and I think I'm late today. And just in the last two weeks, we haven't had time to do that. So we do have an ambitious plan to get the manual, hyper ambitious, at the end of this year, I'm going to say by a year from now or next September, we'll let the parents pass through it. So an internal goal, it's end of this school year and by a realistic goal, it's getting started. And the last is, again, this question, we addressed it, free and reduced. Just as a reminder to the population and to the board, that universal feeding is done. We're back to the more traditional free and reduced federal program. He had the state that swept in and is no longer reduced, so it's still called free and reduced. But the state pays the quarter for the reduced, so it's really just free. It's still not on the screen reduced. We have more applications coming in than we can remember at this time. We also are going to have a big push come out the second half of September, both electronically, through our contact, we didn't have something. We also had flyers going to places such as The Rockfish, restaurants, the East Aurora Ministerium. I'm going to hang in the back of the churches or Quiltons and things like that. And it's more just the awareness with inflation with the pandemic and the ripple of this, like still going on. We want to make sure that they know they have this up. So we're going to do a full court press. If you don't get it by that deadline, you can still sign up and it just starts when you sign up. The goal of October is everyone's kind of, and that's when you have to start paying or you have to do. So anytime you talk to anyone or any of your community groups, just provide folks to please do again. Even if they think they have the resources to do it, they're eligible. It's a huge driver of some of our date formulas and also some of our brand eligibility. And also, y'all know the insecurity of the economy and everything else going on. It's better that it has to be approved and never used it than to be living on the edge, something happened. Now you can't afford to be with them because we can turn around and play, but there is a lot going to do it all. So if you're at all eligible or close to being eligible, we encourage folks, your family's information is confidential and your child's privacy is confidential. They type in a four digit code, they get their own personal four digit code, it's not a free and reduce code. Every kid in the district has a code, they type in their code as opposed to coming from the parent's account. It just goes to free and reduce account. But everyone has a unique four digit code and no one is the wiser about that. So we're going to push so please, anytime you talk with anyone or any groups, if you're calling from other civic groups, just if we can get one or two more kids eating a meal five days a week.
I just want to say thank you, George, and to any of the applications out because we brought it up there at the candy meeting because of the, the one way to university, to be shipped back. And just making sure people are aware, we need to, we applied, we did a great job of PMC, giving information out there. We're being a real strong return, which is really great. Nelson, this week, we marked up this week, lots of sales. But if it was a bigger effort to, we didn't, we.
Yeah, I have one second. I found this in. This isn't free and reduced, it's sort of a general. Do we still provide help areas, just as we're talking about the economy concerns? I had some parents said that they didn't have them available.
If anything, it's just the opposite, that it's not mandatory that we do that and we have four digit codes to do it. So yes.
So I think high school, they can get the help there.
They can or they've been very short over the years.
So they just need, what do they need to do?
Well, go to your counselor or math teacher. Once we're working on their coming in, then supply changes. But we're mostly discovered, so they feel a little bit of a later account.
Okay, but they can get that.
The plan is, yes, and we do have flash insights, you can at least borrow, borrow from that. But ultimately, it'll be like extra, um, like, also, we are.
Okay, all right.
So I was just, okay, so I know that there's been a massive amount of information already put out about how to put money onto your lunch account, your practice lunch account. But just from what I've heard in the community from other parents, if maybe in the two gift holders or in the high school, whenever you put out something, maybe you could also just reiterate that again. Because I know, I know it's been out there, but there's a lot of information that some of the parents haven't gotten that and they're still kind of confused that how to put money down onto their two gift holders.
We have a building level and we'll add it to all of our feeding, social media persons in the rest, if you're writing. So it's another thing that you think you're going to get to until.
Right, and then you go to do it and you're like, where does that?
Yeah, well simplified with some simple links. Yep, yeah, only thing we can do is write that.
I think there's been a lot of questions out concerning how you pick money into my school box.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
As far as, like, a lot of people think they can only do it online.
Yeah, okay, well.
That's, that's the big question. There's a service charge if you do it online.
Right, but you can do it again. Yeah. We'll make, yeah, we'll add that to our feeding list. Yeah.
Any other administrators to say?
I have one question, Nate, I'll send you the information, but I just realized our coordinator, Mrs. Black, was saying, Jean Coleman and I, our Spanish support center, have been working together to prepare for serious presentation this school year. We're going to have that in sense. But the first one is October 3rd. It'll be in the middle school multi-purpose room. And all of these events are going to be in person, but they'll also be live streamed. From soccer games, the red, wherever they are. And the first one, and all of these are based off of the survey results we sent out next March to all of the parents. And the first one is being designed by Horizon Health and the title is mental wellbeing and stress management. A couple of highlights, parents will be able to learn the signs, symptoms and treatment, treatment of anxiety and depression, how to get conversations with children or loved ones, how to access phone services, pair a brief overview of wellness activities and suggestions on how to work your district records along with several levels of treatment options and research in the album. But that's October 3rd. I'll send the email back to the entire community and I will make sure to explain to them all the big things. Thank you.
Just let's give you this comment, I do, this summer we probably had one of the best professional development.
We have a report for October.
Yes, yeah, you want to just give us a taste of that.
Okay, in addition to, sorry, it's free. Well, in addition to the regular hours that teachers had requests for, it could be, keeping the schedule fun. We were able to offer some other professional development activities around historic practices. There was implementation team training for Cartel and Middle School. We had science teachers, and we have those at one back. We had a Caden, a collaborative learning training for two full days. We had fifty three teachers come to that. We had two days of co-teaching training. I don't know how many, some of our point.
I'm sorry, we have libraries.
Yeah, and that's an opportunity to hopefully find together. So just some little extra activities that are really, really well attended and appreciated. And even walking in school, you can see what they're, what they learned, they come in and they have a great day. Thank you all for being here.
I think it's working. Moving on to item seven, community comments, which is our opportunity for community members to address the board of education. I think you want to go to the other viewer.
Start with the good stuff. My son started to be able to design. Kind of excited about it. I'm not sure what's going to happen, what we're going to say with it or go back to conventions and electricity. But at this point, that seems to be something intriguing him. Regarding Mr. Brunson talking about the digital pianos. This summer, there was a lot of desks and veins hooks and stuff purged into a dumpster. And also there was a lot of bat hooks and stuff purged last year. There's a lot of people in the community that recycle this stuff, whether it be for another school or whatever, or other music programs. What's going to be happening to the digital pianos? And I'm not at time crunch, so you can maybe answer these questions, I've got to go as quick as I can. So nice to be able to hear the Board of Education members, you guys are speaking up. It sounds good that you're using your outdoor voices so that everyone can hear. The outdoor classroom, how are we designing, how does the community reserve it? First day of school, my son was told by the principal that there were no free lunches, so he didn't get a minute to get lunch. I came to this, to visitor, the reader on Thursday and it was promptly handled. I got a call from personal touch to Pascal. Went without lunch the first day, but everything got handled and got everything through through Mrs. George. Thank you for your upfront on that. And then? So I didn't find out about this media, it was a half consent. But I read in the paper that it was the 28th. It was also on a calendar for the 28th. Turning to open meetings laws, one oh four point one, that requires a notice, James sent to media, what was in the video of the 28th. So as of on that. Regarding the safety plan included in the thirty deficiencies required by regulation in the district safety plan is a mission of the district's continuation of operations planned consistent with labor law. If the governor declares a state of emergency involving a communal pool of thieves, this law passed by the legislature and signed by the governor as of September 9, 2012. How can a district justify their failure to comply with this law when they signed the tenuous leave charges to terminate an untenured teacher and illegally suspended a tenured teacher violating due process rights for refusing to share their personal medical information with the superintendent? Something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Appreciate your feedback on all of the topics. Maybe stay tuned for information on the outdoor classroom, because that's still in works. But I think we do have a core fact, the community on that later. Mr. Student, anything you want to share? I did see some of this in the community as well about the urging of materials. Do you want to share the laws, the school, the district operators, that are terrible, what they're allowed to do?
This works close to a process when certain pieces of energy, tourism, we obsolete. Technology is a little bit different, they do have a certain shot, but I think. That's the place to send back groceries depending, can you explain that for us? I thought it was a special.
A great majority of what's found, you purchase it through groceries, which means we receive grocery data on it. And then the truth back, they're the owners of the place. So when we are done or kind of flooded, we're longer able to update. We send them back groceries to their property and they dispose it appropriately following security pressures, make sure that it's wiped. It's their devices that we send back. We just use them for the time, not release, but it's their ownership. For devices that the district actually purchases. Those, once we hit end of life or hit non-use time, we bring those to the board, where you're able to dispose. And because so much of it contains D I I and student information, the majority of that goes to a practice recycler to sufficiently certify that they are wiped and have all of our data and projections. That is the subject we.
Definitely kind of a key process that begins with. Yeah, when we get rid of, or when we get rid of surplus, just selling our young, for mobile, like, digital women, vehicles. Well, so just a number of things like that. But if it's other items, I'm not sure what the board policy is, that if it's obsolete, go ahead. Open actually, it has to be exposed in a most prudent, efficient manner, I think there's some wording like that. And it is, so things like old desks, which you can research on. I know a lot of people say there should have been an option out here. But if you look at auctions international, which have to be great down the road, which we do use to sell our surplus items, but things like desks, tables, you know, furniture, it doesn't bring anything. I tried to do that. I sold, you have to do tables on auctions. It was quite short. It was quite short.
I guess I was just, I'm sorry, Ms. Tony, we're going to knock it back and forth, but we could follow up later. My understanding is that the labor that it takes to do the selling, it surpasses what you can bring back from it. I'm sure from community members that they had said, why don't we give this stuff away? And I understand that we're not allowed to give things away because they are, you wait for by taxpayer, correct? It's different than you wanted to rein.
Well, normally I don't rein, but the other piano issue, we did have a really neat discussion with Blackwell about preserving those used pianos and having a team's ability to catch them out. I would like to check out a library for them because that would enable them to have a piano at home. If they don't have it, they're still good as pianos. They just don't have the interactive ability to do it. So you can, you can still turn on the speakers that look and play the piano at home. And so it might give students opportunities to actually practice the piano at home.
So we may have gone a little unfortunate because the pianos aren't actually being disposed of, we're just getting new ones that are better.
They're not being disposed of, but we're getting new ones.
Exactly, thank you. I'd be happy to follow up later if you have further questions. Is there anyone else who would like to grab the floor?
I'm Megan Armstrong, I live in East Aurora, New York. I actually thought this was a good meeting. I am a mom before I graduated from college, three. I just wanted to say I had a great advertising experience here and it's really exciting to hear about all of the different things that are going on. Because I do have kids in the distance, but they're not running into that school area. And I guess I kind of thought things were chugging along the way they had been. Mr. Robert, I really liked your idea about the Seal of Excellence. That sounds great. I remember dating maybe for those hours and it was like, it was like thinking, it was not, I'll just put it that way. So I just wanted to say that. I, regarding those library situation, I know this has already come to a vote. The writing, the advertisement about it would make it sound like you're kind of just getting rid of books. If these books can be get, like gotten rid of because they're so irrelevant, I think that we need to think about. I think that we need to think about replacing them with more relevant books to students. Because I do still see some beautiful parents on these days and I can see picture books. So these are kids who are still coming and they don't need so much springtime in their school. And I was a store, people have books, I can understand that at any level, they go, they need for the media. But I just hope that we're kind of accommodating everything. And regarding the architecture, we're succeeding, I'll say these light facilities in my dream. So I hope lighting is part of the plan because I'm sold off the plan. I came here not, thought this is all about the libraries. Okay, okay, great. So, but I continue just sitting here. But anyway, first off, I'm.
Thanks very much for attending the meeting.
I have a similar line of questions, should I hold that for a separate discussion on the Capitol?
This is the opportunity for community members, so we'll work, just stay green for the protection.
Yeah, Jeremy Green also have young children, one just started at Parkdale, two more in the pipeline. So my first school board meeting and, you know, coming late to the plan for the Capitol. As she said, I mean, I was quite concerned from the article in the store advertiser, from the rendering here, from the information I could find online. That it seems that technology is really being placed front and center in the design for the media center. And books are literally and figuratively being relegated to the side. And I think if, you know, as Mr. Robert said. The pandemic in the last couple of years has given us an opportunity to rethink and question some of our assumptions about what works and what doesn't and what's important. And I think if the last couple of years applauds anything, it's the limits of technology and instructional technology and education. So I would really encourage, and I think, you know, you shook your head when she was saying her intervention. So, you know, I know the plan isn't to get rid of the books, but I think putting media and technology. Front and center in the design, in the room, in the layout sends a powerful signal to children. And I would much rather have books front center, technology on the side.
Yes. Thank you very much for your feedback. I will just point out that books are media, so media is a broader term, but we'll get into this more later. Media, media does not mean no books, media means books can. We'll continue the conversation and thank you very much for your feedback.
I wasn't finished on that point. I have a separate unrelated.
We're going with three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my first name, I didn't know those. I just wanted to say something about the civic education thing. I think that's great and the service oriented education, as someone who's worked in service, so has earned degrees a long time. Peaceful volunteer, I've spent a lot of my career, my personal life and career doing service oriented work. I would encourage thinking about service and civic duty beyond just volunteerism. As she was also saying, that can lead to a lot of burnout and, you know, lack of fulfillment. I think there's a lot of civic oriented careers out there and ultimately kids, you know, have the same desires that all of us have about getting a fulfilling career. That's going to give them financial stability. And so thinking about, you know, exposure to career education as part of a broader lens and looking at service. I think is really important, looking beyond volunteerism.
Thank you very much for your feedback and thank you. Thank you for the gift. We are moving on to item eight.
So I'm happy I was sweet in the break, said we did not have the zip card, we will have it again for any reports. We'll be at our next meeting. I'm happy to report, the audit is moving right along. Towards the end of last week, the beginning of this week, we received all the draft trial balances. And we're going through them, making sure that we're all in agreement at this time. I haven't received the draft audit report yet, but I imagine it will be coming in the next week or so. Couple of things about the twenty three, twenty four budget, I know we're not even in budget season yet. But I thought it would be good to start talking about, I received a letter from the dairy company controller regarding sales tax revenues. The letter stated that our last sales tax revenue in last year, which we already know because of the thing. It was thirty five percent less than what was projected, which I saw in my projections too. And the controller is just cautioning us in the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year about our revenues concerning sales tax. Predicting that there's a recession coming, just notifying us of the guidance of that, not to forget. And also from the New York State Controller. Received through my publications that the tax state, the tax levy growth factor will be two percent in the twenty three, twenty four year. Based on inflation, they already know that, usually we don't know that number until much later, but we know that number right now. And the New York State Controller sent a letter regarding E R S. Employee retirement rates, that it will be increasing from the twenty two, twenty three school year of eleven point six percent. In twenty three, twenty four to thirteen point one percent, which is more than a percent increase. So there are just things that we need to be aware of, even before COVID season.
That doesn't sound like much, but it's two percent of the entire year. So there's a lot of money.
And that's a two percent rate increase, but when you compare the rate to the rate, it's over a ten percent increase.
Exactly. Big chunk of money.
Right, and I'm anticipating that's going to happen with the tuition payments. I just don't have it. And that's all. I'm so happy. I know, I'm just having down.
No, thank you for getting us prepared. Go ahead.
The, 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 the controller also had an interesting speech that he gave to the New York City. Fiscal Control Board, where he talked about good fiscal planning. He gave three guidelines associated that one of them was what you just talked about. And that is planning early and having, having a long-term plan that you, that you. And Joanne and her staff have done this all a lot. We've had, and we've had this three-year plan out there and a lot of districts don't do that. So it's, it's good that we're, that we're right in sync with what the controller thinks is important. He had a couple of other things that, so I'd recommend reading his speech.
Thank you, Mr. Rest, moving on to item B. Now we're onto the fact of the city project.
Yeah, so Ms. Rest and I, the chance to sit down and talk about the next three months until we get to the vote. Yeah, so we, Jeremy, if we had a chance here with the architects to kind of play out the process or the information out to the public. And say we want to go a step over the next three, four months. And I'll just share that with you all for planning and then open up the questions. And so like in September, one thing was we'll continue with some presentation boards, like you know, they made a presentation board for the media center. Or you can see them around, so they're going to continue developing some additional boards that will cover middle school, the family consumer science room. We'll also have another board that summarizes like kind of the entire project, safety and security. They'll include some things around the high school site plan, set of media centering, and media center will, I love books. So it will be a good balance between the two of technology and maintaining our collection for sure. So we'll continue those conversations and so one thing we would like to do is actually have a question. Like a presentation in two, four meetings in October and November and then allow for a public question after that material. So I'm going to ask the architects to be here with us and also our engineers and also our financial people so that they can be there to answer questions that we have. And then we're also thinking about doing something, I think December seventh, we'll have a community night, which will be strictly devoted to the problems with that, with that second. You know, we'll be using Challenger to share information that'll be coming up shortly. Then in October, we're going to approve the secret, so that's a thing that the board will have to act upon. And we'll move to vote in December. And so we'll make that determination at the next meeting. And like I said, we'll have everyone there, their question unanswered, so that the community has a chance to question the architects directly. And if they have concerns about it. And then we're going to produce some mailers so that we can get it out for public, not only to our families, but to the entire public. We're going to make, some not mailers, to everyone in the community so that they're aware of what's happening.
Would the mailers go out with those to the meeting day that the public?
Yeah, because what we're planning to do is we're planning to send out that mailer conference. That will be about like six weeks prior to the vote, somewhere about that, I think it's basically for the board. Yeah, so that'll happen in October and then going into November, again, we'll have everyone at the board meeting in November. Yeah, like I said, financial advisors, school people, we'll spell along, the architects and engineers. We'll give a scheduled presentation committee, as I said, on the summer to December. And then we'll probably do some kind of additional flyers at that time, just as, you know, like being close to the vote. And I'll be using the communications committee. Also, we'll have at least two or three meetings prior to the vote with communications committee, they'll have the information so that they can hear the public. See what else we can. That's about it, Ms. Rest, anything else?
No, I think that that covers everything that we discussed on the architect and the timeline moving forward. But yes, I'm a lover of books too, so it's unfortunate that that was.
I think, I think we have a perception problem on either end and we're trying to find that sweet spot in the middle. So when we initially started talking about it, we became concerned because there was a lot of focus on, on the architectural elements. And why will we be revamping a library, recognizing that we have a community, many, many folks who grew up here, they've been in the community for years and years and years ago. They had fine educations at East Rock Schools when there were tables and books and what the heck do we need that's more than tables and books is the concern. So we, we started talking about it at the media center, recognizing that tables and books are not the whole story anymore. Of proper library, media center has more than what we currently offer in this space. So we may have swung a little too far in proposing it as a, I'm sorry, we're not going to do background work, but I'd have to follow it to the after. We may have moved a little too far into, into it being framed as a media center, because it seemed like it's all going to be computer screens. And that is not the case, the goal is to update a very old and outdated space and make it more functional for our students. So that they can be current learners in the modern world, not to move all our middle schoolers out of books and on to screens, but to make this. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Rest?
Hey, Mr. Rest, you had said about the question and answers after the presentations for the October, November meeting.
How, how original, you didn't even know that for that specific thing? Because I know the manager that said that the manager going on November first, that's after the November meeting. Was that maybe on our websites, or did he not last?
It would be part of the, it would be part of the, like the process of jet uses to. And yeah, so we'll probably be able to go on and provide some. And we'd be sent, we'd be sent out, we could actually send out, we'd hire some kind of flyer. Early on, say, here's the schedule of plans, of this book, so we'll play, we're going to discuss it. You come, these three kinds of role, we'll have people available to answer questions on the project.
I think it's a good idea, just based on the two parents that we have here that have questions and it's a little bit of an opportunity to help the community to, you know, to attend and ask the questions concerning this project.
Yeah, and having it away from the board table where you can all recognize the frustration of every community member who's ever sat in car chairs. They have an opportunity to speak during community comments and then we move on because it's a business meeting of the Board of Education. But a public session to specifically have that dialogue with the folks who have all the answers will probably be more enjoyable. That's my thought. Okay, so, thank you for having the idea.
Super good of us, like we do, we'll have one of those in October, November.
And Brian, what do you mind, what day is the vote?
The vote is going to be December fourteenth.
December fourteenth. And just to clarify, on October, November, it's a board meeting, just like this Saturday. We welcome everyone and anyone to come. The December seventh meeting would be the ultimate.
Okay, not personally.
Well, we would like input as much as we can get.
It'll just be a presentation of this project, people can come and then get an open part of the meeting, ask questions.
So not in September? Not in September? You said in the number.
No, October, November fourteenth, I didn't do a presentation, the whole crew will be there. They're going to keep presentation, might be the same presentation. And then they'll open up questions after the presentation.
Questions to ask.
So there'll be two community comments, so there'll be one community comment about, like it's similar to how we have community comments about the general topics. And then there'll be a community comment just about this.
So that will be actually October, November, maybe.
And it'll be a meeting on December seventh, it will be just strictly an open floor, talk about.
To play out how this actually works for our community and our voters, it's October, they have an opportunity to ask questions, but not dialogue.
Right.
Yeah, we might, we might be, we're getting a little behind, by the time you get to December, your only choice is, are you voting for it or not voting for it? Because the probability has already been decided. So I would suggest we might want to have more open dialogue earlier.
Yes, that's why I'm sorry. So there'll be their answer question.
The community maybe, they will be able to ask questions in October and they will be able to ask questions in November. They can dialogue and respond to those questions. So they have, or, so they have an understanding.
Well, let's, let's think about how this plays out. So if, if it's, we've had public sessions where we talk about things, we use the video in the cafeteria, right? That we're around people, we're talking, we're gathering information and answering questions. At the board meetings, we have to be a little bit more functional, this is, this is a complete anomaly as far as board meetings goes, the very light agenda. Usually, and I'm, I'm sure in October and November, we're going to have a lot of meat in front of us, but that's not going to give us a whole lot of time for discussion. So do we need to consider a separate conversation with the community? And it may not have to be in October and November and December. Do we, do we want to have at least one earlier on that could provide feedback?
I get a different form.
Away from the board table.
Hey, I think it's important for people to realize that this, this project is not yet designed. What we approved was the scope. The scope is, we're going to do this one. That's the scope. The design is a process of getting input from the librarians, from the teachers, from the community, parents, back and forth. It's in what you're talking about these meetings. And the architect will then take that information and create a design with that information. Our architects realize they are not the experts to decide how this library should work. That it's community that is, and including the teachers, including the parents. And that they will then use their expertise as architects to create a physical representation of what that would look. They, they, this sketch that they did was, was just a, a first draft of the architect's idea. And, and soon as I saw it, I said to myself, well, there's folks in this library, we like books. And so, and so he all, he said to me and he said to everyone who we, that they have every intention of meeting with folks and getting that kind of input. And then when they do the design, they will, they call that. So, so it's important to realize that no design has been decided. The only thing that has been decided is the scope. Yes, we are going to do a library, yes, we're going to do the home computers. But what it's going to look like is yet.
What we did, what we did in past projects was to sign more, to show more of the pictures of the why, right? All of the organs, the old light bulb, the movement. This is the stuff that needs to replace, to replace. So this, this time we flipped it. So they're saying, here's the old thing that needs updating. Here's what it could look like. Because we're trying to let the community know that we're, we're planning the project and it's going to be no bigger than this much. And here's why we need to report on it.
And, and a drawing like that one provokes this kind of response, which is perfect. This is exactly what we need to hear in response to that. Say, oh, that drawing is it, it, it directs us towards something we really don't want.
Maybe we should, I mean, any of the boards that have that exact transition, maybe we should put a note on there. So when people come and look at that, they come and go, oh, I got this.
Yeah, because.
Right. I think that's what we need to do.
Well, yeah, and then anyone who's really excited about that three years without one, they're even like, they're really disappointed that it was.
Well, that's the nature of the law. Different people have different notions of what something should look like. But I have to say, when we've worked with architects for learning spaces in the past, we have, we've never really been disappointed in final result. Once they meet with the teachers, hear from the parents, they, they, they can, they're very skilled at making that space usable and, and attractive. And, and I, I, I think this is going to be a shock to people. It's going to block a lot of votes.
There's an economic reason too, why it's done that way to you. Because if the project order go down and you've had all these designs and the old architect, all sorts of money for that type of work. What's happened is it would come out of tax papers.
Good point. It has to be approved before you.
It's got to be a little bit vague, a little bit, just how we're talking on the express. It's cheaper than.
That's a, that's a fantastic point because you can't spend the money before we've been approved.
Yeah, you would want, you want the architects to give enough information to be able to answer the questions and to make a responsible vote. You don't want them to do it too much where it just drives up the bill and then the project doesn't pass. It's all general fund money.
We asked them, did we ask the architects to, because this is the, this is the concern of the community that they was presented to them. That, that what a media center is, would be out the architects to before the next meeting. Slightly different, obviously it's not going to be, we don't know what it's going to look like exactly, but we know what we'll contain. So can we, can we ask them to give us what we're asking? Or is that?
I think, I would, I would let Mr. Rest and Mr. George decide, but I think that's what we would not want the board to be doing is to start asking for iterations of the concept before the vote.
Yeah, I think one of the, the architects are always concerned with when you're in is it's just that it's, it's kind of they, they just put out in their own creative way what's, what's based in a book. And so there's really no piece of it from, from, yeah. So they just do that so that people start to think, oh, well, this is wonderful. That's why I think.
I think it's important to, to state, any capital project for a school district in New York State from inception to completion is at least three years. So this is the inception part. This is just the baby steps to meet. You gotta have a school. What is that? Okay. Like Mr. Brunson said, a library. We know we're going to do the library. These are the things that are going to be included in that approximate draft. Do you know what it's exactly going to look like? No. Mr. Brunson said, this is the inception part. There's so much work to do before we even start shovel, shovel in the ground. And it takes so long because there's a lot of steps. And the state of New York is one of the big steps because we get aid back. On every dollar we spend creates $3 worth of work. And that has to do with the aid that we get back from New York State. So of course they're a big piece of that. So they go through all the design, all the mechanical design. Do we need a five horsepower or a 10 horsepower? Oh, I'm the expert. You designed it for a five, you need an eight. Those types of things. And that all takes a lot of time. So the New York State part to get approval takes six to 10 months. So it's just the very, very beginning baby stages of the project.
And that's a very piece of the actual work side for the, from other times, what we actually do.
So, so maybe what we could do is if we, we're planning to send the, the flyer out to the entire community in November. Set like the next Thursday is the night. But I'm not, be like the old form. It's as opposed to December 7th.
Does that give us enough time for?
Give a forty minutes to be a different day.
That would just be for questioning. Does that give us enough time to incorporate feedback on it?
Look what it looks like.
Yeah, it goes directly.
We try to, try to send out a flyer. Maybe we could.
I tried to.
Yeah. It's scheduled. For the second. And then that would give us two to respond to the.
No matter what. The night maybe is about to stay on the 14th. What, what do you have for these September?
February 3rd.
Is everything on November 3rd? On November 3rd, there is a part of the. Okay, then. That, that, that's from one of our. Does that work very well? Thursday. Thank you, remember there. If that works, I don't know. Mr. Rest, Mr. George, I mean, you got to check with the architect. And I think that would be better to give the order, that the architect design. Hopefully the architects can, right? There was kind of a, I was sort of on the back of the board meeting.
Yeah. So we'll keep it around that and. Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's.
Other questions? Moving on to item nine. Is there any legislation from the board? I'm moving on to item 10, consensus items requiring board action. Is there a board member who's to anybody of the. You may have a motion. We've got a silver, a second in time. Daniel, question?
Yeah, I just have a question. It's very, very. Like the cycles, three, you're three of a cycle. There's one, two, three, and it's four parts and so forth. What is that again?
Which one is it?
They sign up for a contribution. It's a, it's a, they sign up for a three or a five year term. That's for new. So that's for new Daniel. So we have our leaders in different roles, either on a three or a five year cycle. But then it takes annual, the middle of the core before they have to reapply.
It's nothing to do with classroom to children, just that.
That's sort of like our seat. Any other questions? Although favor? Quote, sentence, period six zero. Moving on to item 11. Items retiring board actum. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading policies on curriculum establishment, development, evaluation, selection of instructional materials and objection to instructional material. They have a motion. Who's that? Daniel? Second one. Second one was Old Iron, discussion?
I, I just said from policy number eight, three, one, zero, is that going to be the number for that?
I think we're weak. Yeah, we go for the. The number.
That's the placeholder number that we're going to, it's going to be found as now. Once you go through the whole cycle, you then go back and adjust, adjust numbers to make sure that it's not. And we did just for the board, said things like numbers aren't considered editorial changes. So I will approve on that. We don't have to do two more readings for the policy number of all the changing. That's considered again. So Shaq is home at least for the next year. And I wouldn't there longer or if I could.
Thank you very much. I'll just remind you for everyone who needs, item A and item B, we work together. We're updating. So we're, we're, we're moving the old. Any other questions? Although favor? I propose abstentions, period six zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading the removal of the policies on curriculum development and resources, evaluation of instructional programs, selection of library audio visual materials and objection to instructional materials. I have a motion. By Mrs. Daniels, sent there by Mr. Flowers, discussion? Thank you, Mr. Brownery. Although favor?
All right.
opposed, abstentions, period six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the 2022, 2023 food service management company contract with personal tax. I have a motion. Page under 11, seconded by. Discussion? Although the favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, period six zero. We have completed all of our business. They have a motion to enter executive session to. I'm, I'm going to request a motion to enter executive session. I will point out to our community members who are present that we will return simply for the purposes of enjoying the meeting. We will not conduct any further business after executive session. Okay. I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment history of two particular employees and the employment history of four particular corporations. Page under 11, that's it. Seconded by Mr. Brunson, discussion? Although favor? I propose abstentions, period six zero. Thank you all very much for being here this evening.